Meeting of the Maua Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. Webinar ID for this meeting is 850-4003-8687 and the required password is 556237. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Davinero. Mr. De Silva. Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky. Ms. Jansen. Dr. Morthe.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Maua Board of Education will meet on January 22, 2025, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Maua, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Mr. Copeland?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are...
Yes.
Okay, sure. So we're gonna go to executive session in the beginning this evening, so... because it should be fairly short. So I need a motion to recess to exec. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. We will be back in... shortly. Next. Okay, and we're back. So I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Hughes, and second by Mr. Copeland. Thank you. All right, let's move on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. Please identify... if you're here with the group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please provide your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Hughes. We are officially open to the public. Okay, seeing no one coming forth at this time, we need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. All right, our Maua student representative report this evening.
Hi, so the first thing we have is that last night, we, Action to Athletics, hosted the annual Hoops for Marcus game. It was very successful, raising over $3,000, all of which will go to the Marcus Kill Memorial Scholarship. Also, Winter Guard has started, and they performed at West Milford with their performance titled "When Darkness Comes." Art Club will be organizing an exhibition for the T3 gallery, and they got new walls and pedestals for that, which is exciting. And then the seniors hosted their talent show a few weeks ago, and they raised over $2,000 from it. And that also includes their pizza fundraiser too. And then DECA sent 90 students to Ramapo College to compete, and 42 of them will be going to Atlantic City for states. And then the last thing is that we had various students compete in... or perform in the Burton County Band and the Burton County Chorus, both which had concerts at Paramus High School on January 12th. And that's all.
Very good. Thank you very much. Dr. DiToro, superintendent's report this evening.
Yes, so, please, as we usually do, we have a number of things that we would like to celebrate that's been taking part throughout the district. Our Performing Arts continues to perform at a high level and represents Maua extremely well. After a long wait for the final results, the district is happy to announce that eight of our nine students who auditioned for North Jersey Regional High School Chorus recently were accepted. Congratulations to senior Colin Mossman, sophomores Daniel Fernandez, Suri Lee, Adya Manapali, Avani Singh, Sasmita Velur, and freshman Ashini Desai, and Alina Genelena. Colin, Danny, Sasmita, and Asha will be singing with the mixed chorus in Suri. Adya, Avani, and Alina will be singing with the treble chorus. Special kudos to Suri and Alina, who both scored in the top five of their respective sections. They will be... they will all perform at the Morris Knolls High School Competition on February the 1st. Next slide, our performing arts success continues. Congratulations to sophomore trombonist Gloria Zahn on earning the first chair trombone in the 2025 Region One Symphonic Band. Gloria now qualifies to audition for all-state band. This I'm extremely excited about as well. We've expanded our middle school sports. This falls in line with what we talked about, a long lines of our facilities upgrades and things that we want to do to really represent our school as well. On the left, you'll see a picture of our current scoreboard. On the right, there's a mock-up of the new scoreboard, which will be installed. The scoreboard is actually donated by Dylan Hofstis with DH8 Contracting. We've worked with him on a number of different projects. Mr. Pelletier is the contact, and Mr. Greg Romero has been working with Dylan, and Dylan's very excited to donate this piece for our middle school field. This is... I'll give my address, I'll still share with you. 3650 scoreboard, the installation hopefully will be taking place in the late spring, Slide 5, I know this is getting old, but I'm gonna keep saying it.
It's not getting old. It is never getting old.
We completed our first meeting with significant success. We also were able to send out a survey to gather feedback from all those who couldn't attend, just to ensure that everyone's voice is heard and taken into consideration as we build our next strategic plan for 2025 to 2030. We will be sending out a save the date very shortly for our February 27 meeting. The location will be at Joyce Kilmer School. Please, we ask that you go out and you get as many people as you can to attend. Last meeting, there was over 70 people who were in attendance, but we want to continue that positive momentum through the second and third meeting. Slides, our next slide is specific to our Thunderbird Times, and so I hope that this has hit your mailbox since the last meeting. This is in our effort to engage our entire community, not just our school-based clientele. This is an opportunity for us to showcase all the things that we have to offer across the district, K pre-K through 12th grade. The administrative team did a lot of work on gathering information and pictures to really showcase the things that we do and the wide variety of experiences that we provide to our students. Also, it's an opportunity for us to connect with our community that don't have students in our school systems and share with them their contributions to our efforts as well and how much we appreciate that. We are also... I ask that you take some time to look at our website. So, as you all know, we changed over our website last year. We've made a significant effort to make sure that that website showcases a lot of the things, not only at the district level, but at the schools, the school levels. So there are a number of things from the Thunderbird Times that you'll see on our district website, that gives people an opportunity to enjoy the work that's being done here in Maua. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. DiToro. Our business administrators report. Mr. Lamb, you have a report for us this evening?
Sure, Dr. Morthe. We have on the agenda tonight approval of awarding a bid for the rooftop HVAC unit for Joyce Kilmer School for $380,000. And the great news for that is that the state will be reimbursing us for 40% of that cost through the ROD grant program. This is one of several ROD grant projects that we'll be approving this year. On the agenda tonight is approval of the 2023-2020... Oh, is it not? I'm sorry. On the agenda is approval of the 2023-24 audit. So just wanted to thank our auditors from Mizavatia for their hard work on it, and thank you to all of our business office staff for their hard work in preparation for the audit. Mr. Gallo, I'll let him provide more details later in his report. And that is all I have for the BA report. Thank you.
When is the JK RTU project going to be implemented over the summer?
It'll be a summer project.
And hopefully finish before school starts.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Assistant Superintendent's report, Dr. Fair.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
We're back. So there's... you know, since Dr. DiToro and I have been preparing these slides for board meetings, our building principles have caught on, so they forward us all the great things happening. So we're trying our best to showcase everything, but, you know, we actually have some slides that we've pushed to the next meeting. There was just a lot of great stuff.
It's overwhelming.
I know. Well, yes, it sure is. So you'll see here, we have our students from our DECA club. DECA stands for Distribute Education Club of America over at Maua High School. So you'll see in that center image, our students are actually throwing up the DECA symbol because they crushed the Northwest District Competition last week at Ramapo College. Maua DECA competed with 2,000 students in events for marketing, entrepreneurship, business management, hospitality, and finance. Only the top 14 in an individual event and the top eight in a team event were selected to advance. 20 DECA T-Birds are advancing to the state competition, being hosted in Atlantic City this March. So those who have advanced, we have President Claire Lito, Officer James Arciero, Officer Sri Samhita, Bama Dipadi, Dalina Wong, Corinne Salzman, Admiral Crowe, the team of Dashi and Rathad, Ikanch Nama, Aiden Muller, Izzy Molina, Tricia, Raja Morthe, Anya Duvey, Trabani, Pawar, Ashini Desai, Mateo Ogami, Devon Strummer, Kate Rips, Kalen Brisby, and Umar Kazzi. So congratulations to all on a win well earned. You'll see your places, we have our announcement for kindergarten registration, and that will be sent to families in the coming weeks. So included in that notification to new families will also be the introduction to our summer programs connected to students new to kindergarten, including Safety Town in late June, our kindergarten Kickstarter Program in early August, and our kindergarten Play Day hosted by the MSF that occurs right before the start of the school year as an opportunity for incoming kindergartners and their families to connect. So we're excited to welcome our new families to district. You also see in this evening's agenda, all of our existing summer programs from previous summers are listed on the agenda for your approval as well. So we hope to begin staffing each of those programs in the coming weeks. So in upcoming agendas, we hope to have those staff members recommended for your approval. We have, over at Ramapo Ridge, we have TEAMS, which is another acronym I'll share with you. It stands for the Empathy Equality Entrepreneurship Mission, which is a nonprofit organization that connects students with humanitarian organizations around the world. So we reported on this a few months ago, that this would be happening, and it finally did. So here are just a few pictures from their conference last week, where our students started out with a Zoom call with kids and teachers from Kenya. Then the Walbrook students introduced each of the speakers, which was a really cool experience for our students. And here, we have Ms. Shannon on the right, she teaches social studies at the Ridge. She's holding her prize for winning their trivia contest, and she looks quite proud. The workshop focuses primarily on the UN Sustainability Goals and how this connects to the Declaration of Human Rights and the curricular connections to the importance of clean water to a community. So good stuff happening over at the Ridge. We've also talked a lot about our internship and externship program. Dr. DiToro and I have bragged a lot about this program. We thought mid-year, it would be really great for you to see some of the faces of the kids involved in our program. On the left, you'll see Carlos Alfaro Hernandez, who is a work-based learning student doing his internship at Liberty Kia. Here, Carlos is assisting a mechanic with a pre-delivery inspection. What's cool about Carlos's experience is he's deciding if he wants to be a plumber or a mechanic post-high school, so he looks like he's smiling and enjoying it, so perhaps he will lean towards working with vehicles. You'll see in the middle, we have Wally Dennison, who is a senior working at Lee Stritz Advanced Technology Corporation over in Allen Dale. Lee Stritz, for those who don't know, works with technologies associated with automobiles, airplanes, drones, tools and machines, and medical technology, foods, flooring, and packaging. Wally hopes after graduation to be a Marine, and what's so cool is that this company makes pumps for the Marines. So it's a really cool connection for him for what's to come in his future. On the right, we have Jason Francisco's work study, which is at Stop &amp; Shop in Wycoff, and here he is stocking shelves. Our next slide has Spencer Dresima, who showcased over at Powerhouse, a local gym. He's been learning about the inner workings of the operations of a gym, and he's looking to pursue a study in athletic training after he graduates from Maua High School. Students who worked voter registration as an internship through December are there in that second image, where they worked with the League of Women Voters. They learned about, obviously, voter registration and engaging with the community to do so. Gabby Young is currently interning at Maua Public Library, posted as her mentors in that image. And Jacqueline Lizbeth, God bless you, is in the fourth picture in her work study at Suffolk. So we have a range of experiences for our kids, and I think they're getting a lot out of it. Joyce Kilmer School announces its eye-ready winners. With our focus on using data to personalize student learning, our teachers have been working hard on shroom data-driven instruction. Over at JK, classes are highlighted as winners each month. So if you remember, JK had their academic pep rally that we highlighted at our last board meeting to promote the excitement behind this work, where we had Chloery, the eye-ready mascot, do a dance-off with the Thunderbird. So we appreciate their efforts here. You can see in this series of images, the winning class is based on numbers of lessons completed with a certain percentage of accuracy within the time allotted per week. So winning classes spin a wheel for any of the following prizes, including game room time, popcorn or popsicle party, or a homework pass. As we've been talking about with our strategic plan, our goal is to make more and more connections, especially here with Ramapo College, right here in Maua. Beyond our student-teacher clinical interns, you'll see on this evening's agenda, we now have established a multi-year partnership with Ramapo School Nursing, beginning with three interns from Ramapo College working with three of our school nurses. So we're really excited about that as well. We have a report on the high school's Homework Club, which has also been sparked from our strategic plan in terms of making connections with our older students and mentoring our younger students since last spring. So our high school students continue to be fantastic helpers, and they're forming meaningful connections with the younger students through their work in our Homework Club. Our younger students are able to connect with and look up to our high schoolers as role models. There's so much participation that they're looking to potentially find a different space because, as you can see, like, it's brimming with the number of students who are helping and being helped. What has been most rewarding for Mrs. Kizinski, the advisor of the club, is seeing former Homework Club participants who once sought help now return as high school helpers, which is really cool to see that full circle. Watching their growth and how they now get back to the program has been incredibly fulfilling. So we're really proud of our kids. Dr. DiToro and I will be visiting the Homework Club in the coming weeks. And some additional highlights at the elementary school level, you'll see here, this past January 20th, our K3 schools honored Dr. Martin Luther King Day through a variety of different activities. You'll see GW students honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King through engaging art activities and read alouds. Students explore themes of discussing the positive changes made for our world today, encouraging students to value differences, fairness, imagination, and empathy. And you'll see over on the right, Lenape Meadows, their phys ed class. Actually, that's an action shot from a video that was taken, where students would perform specific exercises based on a series of facts about Martin Luther King's life. So if they thought it was true, they would do one exercise, and if they thought the fact was false, they'd do another exercise. So that's our stat, trying to get our kids motivated. And here at Betsy Ross School, we had another visit from Okai Rose. Okai Rose is an organization that focuses on wildlife and environmental education with a special focus on animal rescue. The educational program provides students with lessons about nature and the environment. And lastly, we have a student to highlight here. Senior Kirsten MacRae has just been informed that she has been selected as a 2025 Burton County Unsung Hero. Kirsten will be attending the county awards ceremony, which will be hosted on Tuesday, March 4th, at Burton Community College. The ceremony promises to be a memorable occasion filled with inspiration, recognition, and the company of fellow students, faculty, school board members, and distinguished guests. The distinction is given to those students who make their schools a better place. So congratulations to Kirsten on this well-deserved recognition. And lastly, our only person who's in the audience other than Ms. Rizzo and Dr. Labino is Mr. Brian Neer, who is listed as a recommendation for appointment under Item 19B. We're recommending to the board, Mr. Neer is the assistant to the business administrator. Mr. Neer is currently the staff accountant for Randolph Public Schools, where he is primarily responsible for payroll in the business office. Before this role, Mr. Neer served on the auditing team for Mizavatia LLC, where he served as a senior accountant. In fact, Mr. Neer actually served as an auditor in reviewing this district's finances prior to joining Randolph. Mr. Neer's references share that he is professional and calm and has a wonderful personality in the office. Further, his references at Randolph also share that Mr. Neer's audit background and payroll experience give him a strong foundational knowledge of school finance. Through the interview process of approximately 30 candidates, Mr. Neer showcases professionalism and his understanding of school business operations, and we recommend him to the board for this role without hesitation. Brian, you can do the wave. Thank you. We're proud of you. You're good. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Dr. Fair. And there was more that you couldn't even...
Yes, more to come.
There's a lot to come. And congratulations, Mr. Neer, and welcome to our district.
Thank you very much.
All right, president's report. So I'm gonna just speak to our committee, and liaison appointments have been completed, and I just want to talk about that a little bit. We are a board that runs through committees, so we have six standing committees and one ad hoc committee. And at this time, board members express their interest and what committees they want to be on, and the business of those committees is done and then brought back to the full board. So I just wanted to review. We have our executive committee, which is myself and the first and second vice presidents. So Mr. De Silva, Mr. Kizmarsky. On negotiations committee, we have Ms. Jansen, who's not here this evening, who will be our chairperson. We also have Mr. Gallo, Mr. Denise, and Mr. Copeland joining the team. On instruction and curriculum and special education, I'm the chairperson, and we have Mr. Gallo, Ms. Davinero, and Mr. Copeland. Finance and facilities, Mr. Gallo is our chairperson, and we have Mr. De Silva, Mr. Kizmarsky, and Ms. Jansen. Community Community relations, it's another standing committee that's chaired by Ms. Davinero, and Mr. Kizmarski, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Copeland are on that committee. Our policy committee is going to continue to be led by Mr. Denise, who is our chair, and we have Ms. Jansen, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. De Silva. Our ad hoc transportation committee, which we're looking to make as a full standing committee, but that takes some things that we have to do to vote on, that's chaired by Mr. Copeland and Mr. Denise, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Gallo. We also make our liaison appointments. We have appointments to other organizations, and one of those is Mawa Access for All. This year, that will be Mr. Gallo and Ms. Davinero as the alternate. We also have liaisons to the Bergen County School Boards Association. This year, that's going to again be Mr. Denise and an alternate, Mr. Hughes. Mawa Schools Foundation, Ms. Jansen and Mr. Copeland. And our Board of Ed liaison to Town Council, which is Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Copeland. And then I will be the liaison to our New Jersey School Boards Legislative Committee. So anyway, I thank all the board members for providing their requests and being very flexible. The one thing about this board is I hear often from board members, put me where you need me. There's a lot of flexibility. People are very willing to work together and work on any committee, and that's greatly appreciated because I think that's the strength of this board and how well we work together. So thank you very much. That's all I have for President's Report. Now let's move on to our board committee reports and any of our chairpeople who have reports this evening. Mr. Copeland, your instructions?
Transportation met this morning for the first time in the calendar year. I want to thank Dr. Fair, Mr. Lam, and Ms. Spindler for their time this morning. It was great. Just, I wanted to highlight just one quick number for, just reminding everyone, the schools have been doing audits of ridership. So they're doing on random days throughout the, since September, about three days each month through December. They're random, they're noting weather, they're noting conditions, things along those lines. We're averaging about 39% ridership, which is consistent from last year as well. So I just wanted to share that number because it's an important number when we start talking about transportation, because I'm about saying how many kids are using it, things along those lines. So welcome, Mr. Gallo, back to the committee. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Should we just go around? Mr. Gallo?
Shortly before our board meeting, we met with our auditor to review the audit findings for the past year. You'll notice in 18J and 18K, there are two items related to recommendations and findings regarding management in the district, financial management issues in the district. They were relatively minor. And in general, the audit was pretty good for us, I would say, but there wasn't a bit of room for improvement, and we're going to get there. So I just wanted to thank Tom and his office for getting us through the audit process. It's always an undertaking. There are two auditors come in, they review all sorts of records all day long, and purchase orders, requisitions, financial records, et cetera. It's a very comprehensive undertaking for the district, and for the most part, the district has done very well over the past couple of years. They're very, the findings this year were relatively minor. They have no way impact the overall, can misrepresent the overall condition of the district's financial status. And we also had a lively conversation on various other subjects that will help us in the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Denise?
Yes. The Policy Committee met on January 6th as part of our continuing review of our policy and regulation inventory, and we have four policies and regulations on tonight's agenda for first reading. Policy and Regulation 1540, Administrator's Code of Ethics, was revised by removing the word substantial when referring to conflicts of interest, adding a reporting requirement for offers of meals, entertainment, or hospitality, and replaced financial disclosure language with language from Strauss estimate. Policy and Regulation 1550, equal employment anti-discrimination practices, was revised by replacing public education system of New Jersey with Mawa Public School District, and replacing the word handicapped with disabled. Policy 5120, assignment of students, was revised by adding a sentence recognizing that the consideration of school assignment, other than the designated, other than that designated by a student's designated attendance area of their residence, will be on a case-by-case basis, and also adding a paragraph concerning the building principal assigning students in the school to appropriate grades, classes, or groups. And finally, Policy 5701 was revised by changing the title of the policy from plagiarism to academic integrity.
Thank you, Mr. Denise.
All right, I have a quote from instruction and curriculum. This is actually from our meeting from December, closing out the year. Wanted to highlight something that I thought was, that was presented to us by Courtney Corella, something called the Confidence Closet at Mawa High School. A very interesting program that was started. Courtney works very closely and has a program for ML learners. And so this was started for that in case kids required things that they weren't, you know, able to get, if they needed some pieces of clothing, they needed some accessories, things like that, or things for school. And at one point, it was in a closet in the media center at Mawa High School, but kids weren't quite going to it. It somehow moved to Courtney's office, right, at some point?
Moved again.
And then moved again, no. And now it's, what's the current location?
It's a previous supply closet.
Okay, okay. But at some point, it was in Courtney's office. It sounded like she had, you know, shelves and things. And, but what really was interesting is that this started, but then other students also started to use it as well. And, you know, now they applied for a grant, which they received, so they received a $7,000 grant for it, and now it is actually something that's run by the Future Problem Solvers, by students who, again, are helping fellow students. So, I mean, it's just a wonderful program. I think it's been recognized on the state level, on the county level. So I thought, you know, again, kids helping each other and making all of our kids feel comfortable, you know, when they come to school. So a nice program. The other, we also got some iReady. There's some updates of some, you know, our diagnostic results and so on. And that was interesting, Dr. Bavino and our math supervisor was there to present some of those results. I mean, I think most importantly, which was great to see, was that there were some increases from fall '23 to fall of '24. So what is in place, and this, some of the universal screenings, tier-three interventions, things that Dr. Bavino has been really championing and working on, it's working. And it's really a tremendous thing that we're seeing improvements and increases in this score. So that was a good thing. We also had, from this meeting in January, I just wanted to point out 18P on the agenda for tonight. There's some curriculum updates. These are novels that have been added into the curriculum for sixth through 12th grades. There was a pilot program of a book club that was started on, was it the 11th grade? Was it 11th?
Ninth.
Ninth grade. One of the ninth-grade ELA teachers started a book club, was very successful, and now it's going to be incorporated across the curriculum. So what's exciting is that there were several novels. Dr. Bavino actually read all of them and gave approval, so these are books that will now also be available for them to read. And this includes regular novels, graphic novels. So it's really, most importantly, you know, reading is important, and to make sure that kids are engaged and excited about reading, and they have similar themes, the books for each grade, and then kids can talk about, you know, all the major themes. So I think it's really kind of an exciting piece, usually happens in the spring. And so anyway, there'll be new books in our repertoire and their repertoire for that. All right, that's all I have. Anybody else or member remarks? Okay. Oh, Mr. Gallo, I'm sorry.
Just two things. One, International Night was celebrated last week. It seems like every year, the International Night, more people and more cooks and more families show...
More food.
More food shows up, and it really showcases the wide variety of people and cultures and perspectives that make our school experience and our community experience so rich and diverse. It was really well done, and there's always the topic, you know, expanding and bringing the lower grades in, a whole bunch of things, but it was, there's, everybody has a smile on their face, everybody has a plate in front of them, and I certainly had a couple of plates in front of me, but it was really well done. The other thing I just want to highlight is tomorrow at the library at 6:30, there will be a program put on by the Mawa Muslim community regarding Muslim Heritage Month, 6:30, 8:30 at the library. So I think we should try to find a way there.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other board member remarks? All right, so let's move on to old business. Let's take the minutes from the January 8th meeting. Do I have a motion on the floor? Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Denise. Roll call, please, Mr. Lam.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
All right, let's move on to new business. We have 18A to W, but I'm going to take 18T separately. That's our donation of the scoreboard, so let's do 18A to W excluding T, and then we'll do 18T separately. So do I have a motion on the floor? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland for 18A to W excluding T.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Except the, on 18A, I'm sorry.
Oh, check number?
Check number 118566. I'm standing on that check.
Got it, thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes. All right, now let's take our generous donation, 18T separately. Motion on the floor, Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Copeland.
Roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to D H A Contract. It's very generous donation.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, it's a great recognition of our revived sports program at the municipal office. I'm very thankful and grateful for their contributions for our board.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, and this is, thank you very much to them, it's very generous.
Dr. Moore?
Yes. All right, now let's take new business. Person now, we have 19A to Z this evening. Need a motion on the floor, Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Hughes. Roll call, please, Mr. Lam.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to all the volunteers.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and welcome, Mr. Brian Neer, to our business office.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes. All right, public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, need a motion to open the meeting to the public, Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, we are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forth at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Hughes. We do not require an executive session at the end, so I need a motion to adjourn. I have Mr. Gallo and Mr. Copeland. All right, thank you very much, everyone have a good evening. Good night, Mike.